Good evening. Welcome to the Red Hook Town Board Meeting, January 2017. Would you be kind enough to join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Happy New Year to everyone watching at home. You will notice that we are going to attempt this evening to try and use our new smart TV projector, which I'm happy to report we received some grant monies towards. In addition, we received grant monies towards new chairs here in Town Hall. So we'll start out each meeting, if we would, by showing you what's on the agenda. So if you're watching from home, you can get a sense of the items that we'll be discussing this evening and make a determination how long you want to hang on and watch. And it's all part of an effort to try and bring the government a little closer to you. We know in an evening like tonight where it's snowy and icy, it's even more difficult for folks to make it out here to find out what's going on. So we hope this is helpful and any feedback would be appreciated. So we will start tonight's meeting, as we do every first meeting of the month, with the supervisor's report. And that is in the beginning of your folders. And we'll see here through the miracles of technology if we can pull that up. There we go. So what we do each beginning of the month is there's a statement which essentially shows the transactional flow for all our accounts. And it's a report that's given to all of the town board members and the town clerk. They review it, and it shows the various funds and how much activity going in and out of each fund. And what I generally report to you each month is right here on this page, which is the grand totals. And so I will do that again tonight. This is the report ending December 31st, 2016. We start with an opening balance of $3,604,874. We have receipts of $582,991 and dispersments of $551,422. For remaining balances, you see there, $3,636,443. And so what they are provided with as well is copies of the bank payments and so on and so forth, all part of the financial controls that we have here with your tax dollars. And I would like to bring to your attention, because I know we've talked about recently the success of the Community Preservation Fund. And I asked our bookkeeper, Anne Conway, to give us the total for 2016, and we collected in that fund $749,000 in the one year alone in 2016. We had several large transactions. And so we'll be looking to leverage those funds, obviously, to do as much preservation or recreational or historic protection as we can for the community. So are there any questions about the supervisor's report? Okay. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the report.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in. Okay. The resolution is approved. And we also do the town clerk's monthly report immediately following the supervisor's report, and that is up on the screen for you to review as well.
Town clerk's monthly report, December 1st through December 31st, 2016. Total local shares remitted to supervisors, town revenue, $1,339.51. Amount remitted to New York State Ag and Markets for the Spade of Neuter Program, that's for our dog licensing, $51. Amount remitted to Department of Health for marriage licenses, $112.50. Amount remitted to New York Department of Racing and Wagering, and that's for Bell Jar applications. That was a total of $30. And amount remitted to New York Environmental Conservation, $145.49. For a total state, county, and local revenue of $1,678.50 pursuant to Section 27 Sub 1 of the town law, I hereby certify that the foregoing is a full and true statement of all fees and laces received by me, Sue McCann, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook during the period stated above in connection with my office.
Very good. Thank you very much, Sue.
You're welcome.
Is there a...any questions or discussion about the clerk's report? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Thank you very much. Okay. So we will now move on to announcements, and I only have a couple of announcements, one of which is that we are holding our recycling, our annual Red Hook recycling event, that's this Saturday, January 14th. We'll do an email blast, because if you're watching this at home, actually, that will have concluded, provided it's not changed due to weather. And I don't think the weather is supposed to be such that we would cancel or reschedule one of that. It's Saturday here at the recycling center from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., and it also includes a food drive, as it has in the last few years. The allowable e-waste includes television, monitors, computers, keyboards, cables, power cords, telephones, fax machines, scanners, printers, cell phones, VCR, DVR, DVD, a lot of other digital music stuff that you can recycle. We want to remind you that if you are bringing a TV, however, one of those old-fashioned CMT monitors, that there is a $20 fee for that. Recycle that. If you have any questions, there is limited home pickup service by appointment for those of you who can't make it here. To contact either Red Hook Village Hall, that's 758-1081, or Sue McCann here at Town Hall, 758-4606. The other announcement I have to make is that we do have another Eagle Scout, someone who has achieved the rank, and we have a resolution to that effect. And Bill, I was wondering how old and healthy, if you'd be kind enough to read that resolution and pass it around.
Resolution honoring James A. Cowperthwaite. Cowperthwaite. Is that how you pronounce it?
Mm-hmm.
James A. Cowperthwaite, achieving the rank of Eagle Scout, whereas James A. Cowperthwaite has completed the requirement for and having been examined by an Eagle Scout Board of Review was found worthy of the rank of Eagle Scout, and whereas Eagle Scout is the highest and most prestigious recognition in scouting, and whereas James Eagle Scout Project was removing the flower boxes at the Myland Fire Station and landscaping the surrounding area in Myland, New York, and whereas through his achievement, James has shown leadership, devotion to duty, and is a true example of our best, of the best of our youth, and whereas James's achievement as Eagle Scout will be acknowledged at an Eagle Scout Court of Honor Ceremony on January 15, 2017. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook honors and recommends James A. Cowperthwaite for his achievement of acquiring the rank of Eagle Scout and authorizes that this resolution be passed to commemorate this achievement, dated January 10, 2017. I so move.
Thank you, Bill. I will second that motion. That resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
That's a resolution.
It's a resolution honoring...I'll give you a copy, Sue, as it passes through here.
Resolution number one, then.
Resolution number one. Well, it's nice. First resolution for the year. To honor his achievements. And if you go to one of these ceremonies, you see how many badges these young men have. It's quite impressive, all the topics. Thank you, Sue. Okay. We are eligible for some public comment. Is there public comment? I believe so this evening. We might as well jump in. We have a long agenda this evening. Hopefully, we can work through it quickly. Our first item is reorganization. Every year, we take a look at our appointments, and during the course of the first few meetings, we make those appointments to various positions in our government. And we are going to endeavor to do some of that this evening. We may have to pass on the committee and the board appointments. We have some things to discuss there, and we haven't heard back from many of the chairs. But we should get started. And I put on the screen here for the folks at home, if you'd like to see who is working for the town and who those appointments are for 2016. We go ahead and assign various institutions, including banks, newspapers, safety officer. These are all town board appointments. Receiver of taxes, vital statistics, so on and so forth. You can look down that list. We do have a vacancy right now for the permanent position of town assessor. And you see who our representatives are. And if you go down to essentially the town engineer right there on the list, those are the appointments made by the town board. And then we have individual appointments as well. During the course of our reorg, beginning of the year, we identify who our official newspapers are, publications, and what the salaries are of the elected officials. And so we have a rather lengthy resolution. And I'm wondering, Jim, would you be willing to read this resolution or summarize it?
As if the one we're getting for the annual reorg here flows?
That is correct. That would be resolution number two.
I will read that.
And we'll have discussion about the assignments and whether or not we want to approve this resolution.
Okay. Town of Red Hook, resolution number two, dated January 10th, 2017, relating to annual reorganization. Be it resolved by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook as follows. One, meeting dates. Regular meetings of the board will take place throughout the year 2017 on the following days in each month at 7:30 p.m. at the Town Hall, second Tuesday and fourth Wednesday. Additional special meetings may be scheduled and announced by posting the announcement date at the Town Hall as required by Chapter 22 of the Town Code and with notification to the press as required by the Public Officers' Law. Number two, official newspapers. The official newspapers of the town of the town for the 2017 shall be the Poughkeepsie Journal and the Kingston Freeman. Depositories, the following institutions: M&amp;T Bank, the Bank of Green County, and Key Bank National Association will be the banking institutions for the year 2017. Petty cash pursuant to Section 64 of the Town Law, the following offices are authorized to maintain a petty cash fund in the following amounts, not to exceed 500 per officer or 1,000 for receiver. Town clerk/receiver, $500. Salaries. The Town Board of the Town of Red Hook has hereby established the following salaries for elected officials for 2017. Supervisor, $29,504. Town board members, each of us receive $8,283. Town clerk, $53,255. Town justices, each receive $17,033. And the highway superintendent receives $62,545. The mileage reimbursement rate for the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook does hereby establish the mileage reimbursement rate of 5...of 53.5 cents per mile for those town officials and employees who incur official mileage using their own vehicles. For the year 2017, payment is to be made only after submission review and approval of the appropriate voucher in accordance with the Town Board audit procedures. Undertaking. Number seven, the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook has hereby authorized the execution of a blanket bond in lieu of individual undertaking pursuant to Section 11-2 of the Public Officers' Law for the purpose of covering all officers and employees who collect money, including the supervisor, town clerk, receiver of taxes, deputy town clerk, deputy receiver of taxes, bookkeeper to the supervisor, justices, justice court clerk, superintendent of highways, building inspector, recycling station operator, and planning secretary. Eight, check signing. The Town Board of the Town of Red Hook has hereby authorized the following to sign bank checks for all town business. One, Supervisor Robert McKeon. Two, in his absence, Deputy Supervisor Bill O'Neill. And three, in the absence of the supervisor and the deputy supervisor, any of the board members, albeit Harry Colgan, Bill O'Neill, of course, who is a deputy supervisor, James Ross, or Sarah Boden, any one of us may sign a check in the absence of the supervisor or the deputy supervisor. And number nine, annual financial report. The Town Board of the Town of Red Hook hereby authorizes and directs the supervisor to submit to the town clerk within 60 days after the close of the fiscal year or such later date as may be required for such filing with the state comptroller. A copy of the supervisor's report to the state comptroller and the town clerk shall cause a summary of such report to be published within 10 days of filing an official newspaper of the town.
Thank you, Jim.
Certainly.
You so moved?
I so move.
Okay. I'll second that resolution. And is there any discussion?
Can we just add one more person in the undertaking?
Okay.
The ZBA secretary also takes in money.
Okay.
We should add her in. Is that right, Chris?
I don't know if what's practically speaking includes what, so if she's receiving funds...
She does, yeah.
Then what the supervisor's...
Well, I think she passes it on to the bookkeeper.
Right. But if she's receiving funds...
Well, that was the planning secretary also does that.
The planning secretary as well, so.
So why don't we amend that motion to approve Planning and zoning...
Yep.
Planning and zoning board secretaries. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So Jim, would you like to amend that motion?
The planning secretary is all...is already on.
Yes. Yeah. I was showing where it's to be included.
So the motion, as previously stated in the undertaking, in addition to...I'll read them, everybody who we will cut...I'll read the whole thing again on number seven. The Town Board of the Town of Red Hook is hereby authorized the execution of a blanket bond in lieu of individual undertaking pursuant to Section 11-2 of the Public Officers' Law for the purpose of covering all officers and employees who collect money, including the supervisor, town clerk, receiver of taxes, deputy town clerk, deputy receiver of taxes, bookkeeper to the supervisor, justices, justice court clerk, superintendent of highways, building inspector, recycling station operator, planning secretary, and also the ZBA secretary. As though that is the zoning board of appeals secretary.
Thank you, Jim. And I will second that amended resolution. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. So back to our list here of what says 2016 town appointments. We can begin with the town board appointments of 2017, starting with official town depository and working our way, all the way down to town engineer. I know we have a letter from Crawford and Associates interested in staying on as our town engineer and indication from our attorneys for the town to stay on as well. And I wonder, do we have any changes we would like to make on that list of town board appointments? Okay. Hearing none, I would like to make a motion that we approve the town board appointments on page one of our Town of Red Hook reorganization schedule. That's from official town depository down through and including attorneys for the town. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. The next section for the folks at home, the supervisor makes certain appointments as well. That would be the deputy supervisor, budget officer, the secretary to the supervisor, the town and assistant to the town historian. And these are the individuals who were serving last year. Our recent addition is Jackie Benaroli, who is replacing Linda Stoddard. Linda is now working for the school district. We wish her well in her new position there. So these are the appointments that I would like to put forth for the various spots. Bill, if you are willing to be honest, deputy supervisor.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Okay. Very good. I don't believe it requires a resolution or a motion, but just to let you know. We also have an appointment by the highway superintendent, and that's the deputy superintendent of highway. And I assume, Teresa, if you wanted a change, you would have sent us word of that. Is that true? All right. So we have Rick Schlammer, who is appointed as deputy superintendent of highways. We thank him for serving in that capacity, especially on evenings like tonight where we're not sure what's happening outside and when, which often happens in the winter. We don't reappoint our employees. That's the next section here.
Remember, we skipped the town clerk appointments.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay.
Okay. We did. We certainly did. Deputy town clerk, deputy registrar of vital statistics, and deputy receiver of taxes, and those are appointments made by our town clerk and any town.
And they remain.
And they have to remain the same. And that's Claire Horst, doing double and triple duty, as Sue does as well here in Town Hall. Doing a great job of it, I might add. Okay. We have our employees, then, and they do not need to be reappointed. We do have our water district meter readers. Those are individuals in our community that go around and read your meters, and they do a nice job as well. We have our consultants, and that is not an appointment. That's a contractual arrangement, and we have entered into contracts, various terms at various times. If you have any interest in reviewing some of the contract terms, when they expire, we will do so at our next meeting and take a look at that. We have re-upped on some of these already. Okay. And then we have our schedule of meetings. Just so the folks at home know, we meet on the second Tuesday and the fourth Wednesday. You can watch these meetings on Panda, Monday, 7:00 a.m., noon, 4:00 p.m., and 8:00 p.m. If you are unable to do so, you can go on pandatv23.org and watch them at your leisure and skip over the not-so-exciting parts of the meeting to get to what you're interested in. We have monthly and annual reports to the town board by the committee chairs, and we have a form of organizational responsibility, a chain of command, if you will, and that reads as such supervisor, deputy supervisor, town board members, listed alphabetically. And this...much of this was in the resolution Jim read for us.
And if I could just note, Mr. Supervisor, that on this sheet, we should conform the list to what was just approved in the resolution for the mileage, which is the new IRS rate of 53.5.
Ah, okay. We're no longer rounding. Okay. So we'll make that change.
I think it's easier to conform to IRS requirement.
Oh, yeah.
You didn't want to go over.
We always wanted to.
Just in case.
That's right. Okay. And did we have that mileage amount? It is in the resolution. Okay. So we're good with that. So we'll make the change on our schedule. Okay. Again, we have our town departments. Let's see if we could tackle maybe our liaisons tonight before we move on to some other items on the agenda, if we could. So there are the functions. Assessor, attorney, bar college, bookkeeper, building inspector, animal control, fire companies. Is there any change that any of you would like to have? Is there a particular item that you would like to swap with someone? Bill, sir?
I'm good with them all.
Are we talking about only the town departments right now?
Yeah.
Or the board and committee?
Yeah. We're talking about just the...
Just the departments?
Departments.
I'm good.
Okay.
Unless anybody wants animal control.
Okay. Yes, I'm sure you'll hear a lot of...
We're all going to be jumping for that.
Just had to throw it out there.
Thank you, Sarah, for that offer.
Yep.
We wouldn't want to deprive you. Okay. Hearing none, and so I'd like to make a motion that the town board liaisons to town departments remain the same as they were for 2016. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. So let's move on to board and committee. Any thoughts on those? And for the folks at home, if we have not yet posted to the website, we're going to post the vacancies that are available on these various committees. We encourage you to go to redhook.org and take a look at that, see if you're interested in any one of these committees and volunteering. So Sarah, did you want to...
Yeah. I forgot to ask Bill about it because he was sick last week, but I was wondering about the REC Commission, if he'd be...since I was helping out with the negotiating with the school district, I've been attending some of the REC Commission meetings to try to get a better sense of the work they do.
Sure.
My family's a big user of the facility, so it seems like a natural fit for me right now to liaise with them, if you're okay with that.
It's one of the main.
Cool. I'll swap you for animal control, actually, if you want. It's not too late.
Not part of the deal.
I don't think you'll be upset about that.
Did you see? I was really trying this. It was really...I tried to work it in.
I was trying.
Well, I had the giggles at the beginning of the meeting, but now I have a reason to have the giggles at least for this part of the meeting. Okay. So shall we make that change then and swap out Bill for Sarah? I'm going to keep you busy, Bill, on other things, then. So that is...
And that was actually acknowledged by...John Kuhn gave me a list today.
Yeah. At the meeting last night, I mentioned to him if he'd...if they'd be willing.
Right. Changed that, so.
Okay. We've got any others? Okay. On that note, I think I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the board and committee liaisons as amended just now.
Second.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, so at this point, we have had some correspondence. I've included in the packets from a couple of the, or I should say, a few of the board and committees, but really not very many. So I'd like to suggest that we go ahead and lead that to the second meeting of the month and maybe hear back from some more committee chairs and some committee members. We have some questions to, we have a few folks who expressed interest last year, and we were not able to accommodate them, because we want to see if they're still interested, just in case there are a couple of people interested in the same spot. So if that's okay with you, if you would just take a look at what's on the, you know, in the packets during the course of the next couple of weeks, and we can...
That's it, Robert.
All right. Item number two on the agenda is what's known as a certificate of designation. The Association of Towns meeting is coming upon us next month, the middle of the month, February 19th. For the folks at home, it's a conference that municipalities go to. There's a series of classes where we become educated or continue to be educated on the issues that are relevant and timely. And there are also voting matters. And so each year, we have to designate someone to vote on behalf of the town of Red Hook. And I would offer my services for that, if that's okay.
So propose if we need to.
Okay, thank you.
Well, second that then, Bill, the motion also makes sense.
Thank you, Jim. Okay. And we have a certificate which, if you do approve that, our town clerk submits on the honor of a half. So, any further discussion about being designated for voting matters? That would be on the Wednesday, February 22nd, I believe it is.
Do we need an alternate? Is that what you were going to say? Yeah, do we need an appointment or not? You're going to do that next? Oh, I thought you were going to do them all together. Oh, okay.
Sure, if you want to do it together, that's fine, too. Would somebody like to be the alternate? Does somebody know yet if they're...
I'm interested in attending. If anybody else is interested, then I'll do come out for the alternate spot, but...
Okay. Bill?
I'm in favor of that, sure.
Okay. Jim, Harry?
Sarah for alternate?
Sarah for alternate.
Yeah, because I'm not sure if I'll be able to attend yet.
Okay.
I think that'd be a good idea for Sarah to do that myself.
Okay. And Harry?
Yeah, I don't have any problem with that. And I have no planning. I do not plan to attend.
To attend, okay. Very good.
So is that the same motion, Bill?
Yeah.
Those and Jim?
Yeah. We'll amend that motion to include Sarah as the alternate. And all in favor?
Aye.
I will pass this on to you, so if I may. Thank you.
I think she's never updated it.
Item number three, we started to talk about this at our last meeting. We're looking at, as we do each year, employee benefits, healthcare cover, coverage. We budget for what we think is going to be the increase based upon the plans that are being offered and the plan ultimately that we will select. And we did get those numbers in from our carrier, from our broker, for the carriers that we take a look at. And I put that up on the screen. And I don't know if you've had a chance to take a look at some of the correspondence and the charts, but I asked Ann Conway to look together some numbers for us in addition to the plans that were sent to us from Brad and Minnie. We were looking at, one of the things we thought is if we chose the silver plan, that maybe the utilization rate might go down because they were higher, deductible levels significantly higher. I think we went from twenty-five hundred to thirty-five for individual and five thousand to seven thousand for family. And we did calculate through December what the utilization rate is. It seems to be trending just as high as before, if not maybe higher. I've given you that as part of the package here to take a look at. And we look at some of the options that were sent to us, there aren't a lot of great choices. Really, the discussion is perhaps going to be more about, you know, what we offer as far as some of the... Yeah, so we have listed here, yeah, we have listed here the various plans, and then we looked at some of the utilization rates, and we just have numbers for employees. Obviously, this is private information, but just looking at the utilization, and there's things are redacted here. So, what we need to consider is which plan looks appropriate, and then if there's anything we want to do as far as the coverage that we provide to that plan. From what I can tell, it looks like we're sort of centered around this Liberty Silver Eight plan that we had last year. It does have higher deductibles, again, from thirty-five hundred to thirty-seven hundred, from seven thousand to seventy-four hundred. So we ran the numbers to see what financial impact that would have, and Brad and Minnie showed us with sixty percent utilization and a hundred percent utilization, and I think we're tracking closely somewhere in between the middle, about eighty percent. So we don't need to make a decision this evening, but we really do need to make a decision by our next meeting. And I wondered, did you all have some thoughts on some of the material at this point?
Well, I looked at it. Stayed up late one night looking at it. Been inclined to go with the same, the same plan we had, we had last year.
Yeah, I agree with Harry. I looked at it because you'd given us this, the last meeting where I looked at it. Makes sense to me.
I ditto that.
And I do also.
Okay, we've got a lot of ditto's. And as far as covering a hundred percent of the premium and the HRA and the deductibles, anyone have any thoughts on that?
Well, we've been giving them the deductible card, right?
It's been a hundred percent covered this past year.
Yeah, it's been a hundred percent the last year. We covered all the HRA. Any thoughts about that? I mean, I think...
The deductible increase is not very large, really.
What's the history of that? I don't remember. I think we talked about it last year, but of the town covering a hundred percent of the deductible versus...
We used to, but then we covered the first ninety percent for a few years, and it didn't really make too much difference. And last year, we went back to covering the hundred percent of it, as much as it was.
The deductible, the insurer hasn't increased the deductible as much this year as they've had, as I recall, in previous years.
It is, it is kind of frightening when you look at the trend line, however, just with last year's increase of nineteen percent, this year of what is likely nine percent increase. Thank you, Steve. A little more volume there. Thank you, sir.
It was the deductible, so, you know, before, at one point, a thousand deductible was a lot, and then now we have the thirty-five hundred.
Right. Yeah. What's that? Exactly.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. I mean, it's gotten to the point where a family plan with the HRA, if somebody utilizes that to the max, it's twenty-nine thousand dollars for healthcare for one employee in a family plan. So, we will keep our fingers crossed that, you know, obviously, there's going to be something attempted with healthcare going forward. Whether that does anything to the increase in the premiums, we shall see, good or bad. But food for thought there, because obviously nineteen percent, nine percent, it's not sustainable levels, but we do really enjoy providing this benefit to our employees who frankly need it, so...
Because this is all as of March, right?
Yeah. Well, what's your pleasure? I'm comfortable maybe taking a look at the Silver Eight and running some more numbers, sticking with that, and maybe taking a look at it again at our next meeting.
You don't have to make a decision tonight.
We don't, but we do, we do have to at our next meeting.
That's fine, right? We all seem to be pretty much in agreement. I don't think the number's going to change, but for us to all look at a little bit more prior to the next meeting is fine.
Well, I want to take a look at, you know, one of the things that we haven't really documented is sort of our exposure, you know, the controller's been sort of after us, our exposure with things like retiree benefits and so on and so forth, to make sure that we address that. So, and that is not a part of, of the numbers that we run.
What was the amount increase that we had budgeted for?
We had budgeted for a nine percent increase.
Yeah, so...
So, we, we do have that in our budget. It all depends, again, on the utilization rate, what, exactly what the number turns out to be. So, I think the message is we can, we can certainly make it work again for this year. You know, the question is going forward, will there be some sanity with these increases?
Yeah. I think the best you can do is take it a year at a time and try to, you know, look at the financial situation each time at budget time, it might be the case. You know, one of these years, we get to budget time and we just can't budget for a nine percent increase, in which case we'll have to look at, you know, changing some of these strategies going forward. But I think this year, since we planned on that increase and we actually have a plan that's pretty close to that, and I guess we should just mention that the dental and vision rates are going to be unchanged, so that's one tiny positive. It seems like it makes sense to stick with what we've got if it's working.
Yeah, I think it is. Okay. So, very good. Why don't we assume that we're going to go with the Silver Eight? Take a look at maybe running some numbers on the retiree stuff, which is not included here, and then move to go ahead with that plan. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so let's get on to our next meeting. Okay, so the fourth item on the agenda relates to, early last year, we took a look at, the Greenway was updating some of their guides, and we went ahead and we forwarded to the planning board a referral, but fell through the cracks. We never got anything back. And so, we're trying to complete that action. So we did some initial seeker work on it. We had a determination made by the planning board, actually, at their most recent meeting last night. You'll see the consistency determination that they made. And we have a draft prepared for us with the town board. And not surprisingly, it looks essentially the same. And so, we should maybe quickly run through this. You see, the form consists, as it always does, of seven pages. Let's see if we have that here in our new technology. Yeah, so, this is it. So, we have an area of town which essentially is roughly nine G and west of the river, which is part of a waterfront revitalization plan that we developed twenty-two years ago. As you may recall, we have a grant now to update that from the state, Department of State. And so, anytime we take an action that has any type of potential impact on the area of the town, we are required to have the planning board, and we as the town board need to determine what that action means and whether or not it's consistent with that plan. And so we take a look at the development policies, and we go through, what is it, in essence, a checklist, to see whether or not this action is consistent.
What is the action again?
The action is the updating of the Greenway guides, if you recall, back in the spring of last year.
But that hasn't even happened yet, right?
No, it has happened. We reviewed all that. We referred it to the planning board.
That's the four policy?
Seven, seven new... We referred it to the planning board, and then we never got anything back from them. So it fell through the cracks.
I don't know why I thought we were...
Do we ever...
We need to get...
Yeah, so did we, and so we looked at it.
Do we still have to get something back from the planning board?
We did, we got it.
Oh, we did?
That's in your packet there. That's the WURP consistency determination.
Mm-hmm.
The town board, exactly. So the town board has to do their own determination, and these are some of the things that are in our draft prepared to us by our planning consultant. That the action is consistent with tourism in our economy. It encourages new development to locate near village centers. Its impact on efficient wildlife. These are all the updates to the guides. So what do those updates mean relative to that area in town? And these are guides as a reminder. The town of Red Hook is one of many communities that has joined the Greenway Compact. In fact, we did so many years ago. And their guidelines should help us steer development in ways that are sustainable and consistent with our plan. So we look at things like public access, recreation, and I guess that's all we've got for that document. All right. More impact on agricultural lands, historic resources. And these documents, these updates to the guides are traded by the Greenway, looked over and reviewed by county planning as well. And so we have, as part of our seeker work, Chris Divas Part Two. And so we have, as part of our seeker work, Chris Davis Part Two.
Part Two reviews the impacts on land, water, future, and of course, this is a planning document, so impacts on groundwater, flood, air, and animals, and we could evolve, we could, no study results, open space and recreation, just on that area, and education, and the other lines. Consistent with local land use plans, and consistent with our community.
Okay.
And it is a part of the seeker view. So your procedures would be considered to be a motion to approve the local waterfront revitalization, prepared by your planner.
Essentially, no difference in familiarity.
Yeah.
This is pro forma.
Providing for the maintenance and connections to Greenway Compact, program for access to the community, as said in the Greenway guide. That resolution has included within it a declaration as to the, the declaration for the full action, as well as approval of those seven guides themselves.
So what do we do first?
LWRP.
Okay.
Okay, so I would like to go ahead and, oh, why don't you do it, Bill? Go ahead.
Do what?
Make a motion to approve LWR.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
Okay.
Thought you were going to have me read it.
No, no, no.
Would you?
I wouldn't volunteer that, but I do make a motion to approve the LWR fee.
And I'll second that.
All right, and for clarification, it's to approve the consistency determination. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now we have a resolution which includes a negative declaration, which essentially means that we have concluded this is not going to have a negative impact by updating these Greenway guides and adopting them.
This was prepared by a planner, and particularly these parts of the meeting, and Doug, the explanation that the Greenway Compact is a voluntary partnership between the Greenway Compact and the community to work for Greenway Gold. The guide provides, illustrates practical solutions for a, they provide visual guides for the advocates for the Greenway project. The program is entirely voluntary, and provides some guidance. The imperative is clear there, because the adoption of the guide is not related to a specific project site, and the action may have potential impacts on patterns of land developments, water quality, et cetera, but no significant major impacts are anticipated, and the policies are voluntary advisory and positive in nature, and will be subject to the public assessment and decision to summarize. If you did have a chance to look at that.
Okay. So we're going to approve this resolution with a negative declaration, and we'll call it resolution number.
Three.
Three. Amendments to Greenway Connections. Can ISO MOE, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're on item number six. Item number six is related to, as you know, we have been.
Somebody's pregnant again.
We have been discussing updating the incentive zoning law and looking to address a couple of questions, and.
Stop sign?
Oh, sorry. I missed, I really checked it off. Isn't that nice? I'm moving so fast that nobody seems to realize it.
We need a stop sign.
Okay, thank you for stopping me, so we could do stop signs. We have a resolution here related to instituting a stop sign at Rokeby Road east of Route 103, and that is something that's recommended by our highway superintendent.
Which is 103? Is that Benner Road?
River Road.
River is 103.
River, River Road, yeah.
E, east of that, of River Road.
It's a Rokeby Road extension?
Yes, right.
When you're coming off of River Road.
No, no, I know where it is.
There's a yield sign, and there's not enough site distance.
Oh, I didn't remember, I didn't remember there was a yield sign.
There's a yield sign on that side, so we had a couple of calls from residents concerned about the safety there, and we did a little engineering study and made it a site distance and agreed that a stop sign would be a better bet at that intersection.
What about the yield sign that's on Kelly Road where, where?
We did do some research into that, and we consulted with the county after that nine G study, and they said that there were no issues there at this point in time as far as crash-related.
There aren't, because I got out of the way of a couple of people who came through there without even making, totally ignoring the sign.
Well, if you'd like to write a letter to the town board.
I just, I just notified the town board.
Where, whereabouts is this?
It's on the triangle. There's a yield sign, and.
Right in Annandale.
Huh? In Annandale.
Yeah.
There's a yield sign there, and twice I have, I have, I've had to stand on the, on the brake. Now, I'm old enough to know enough to pay attention, and at stop signs and whatever, but there were, twice, people went through that without, without looking, never even looked at me, looked at nothing, and if I hadn't stopped, I've gotten out of the way.
So that's why we looked at the crash data, to see if there were any issues in the past. There was nothing obvious, but it doesn't mean that that investigation is closed. It just means that we're doing this stop sign today, and if you have something that you want to contribute to the other yield sign, then we'll take it into consideration.
You'd have to trust my honesty to, from what I just said. There was, was no, no crash resulted, because I'm, I'm, I'm an experienced driver. I knew enough to pay attention.
And another thing is, when there's a traffic pattern like that, and it's a yield sign, you put a stop sign there, then they're afraid that you'll get an increase in rear-end collisions, because people just aren't used to that.
No.
And you have to have enforcement there, so if you don't have all those things in place.
Seems to me that that's a, that's a more perilous issue than, than the yield sign at Rokeby.
Well, the site distance is better on Kelly Road. You're talking about distracted driving.
Yeah.
But we're talking about site distance, the technical aspect.
Well, Harry, what we might consider doing, because we did look at another intersection, because we want to combine all this, you know, not only with item number five, but we had discussed with our zoning updates as well. We want to combine as many as we can to save the taxpayers on, you know, a lot of the costs associated.
I think we're talking about the same one, right? The one on, on Annandale, Kelly Road triangle there?
Yeah.
No, I think.
That's what I'm talking about.
Are you talking about the triangle, or are you talking about on Kelly and nine G?
No, I'm talking about the triangle.
Oh, you're talking about the.
On the triangle.
Okay.
On the triangle.
Yeah.
There is, there is a yield sign.
Yeah.
Where the triangle intersects with Kelly.
He's talking about the information we got from the county.
We did. We, we actually submitted to the county. We did ask for their input on that.
I, I brought it up with them before.
Yeah, and you know that, I believe, Bard is considering, at least that's what we've heard, making that their main entrance. The nine G study has perhaps some suggestions on what to do with that triangle to make it as safe as possible, if that does become their main entrance, and they are going to be taking a look at that again.
One of the options we were exploring is making two legs of that triangle.
I know, I saw that. I was, I was there when all of that.
The problem there is, there's no site distance problem, as you said, Tracy. There, it's just a driver inattention.
And, yeah, basically.
There are three crashes, I think, that they showed us over the course of, from two thousand and eleven, there was one in eleven, there was one in thirteen, and there was one in fifteen, according to the crash data.
But they said it wasn't particularly related to that yield sign.
Right.
So they couldn't be specific about that.
Right.
So at this point in time, we're just doing the, what with the for site distance?
Harry, what we could do is we could, to provide enough time, because we have to set a public hearing, if you like, we could set it for two meetings from now, perhaps, and then give you time to, you know, look at this further, if you'd like, at that other intersection.
Well, this is all set up, let's just move forward with this.
You should do it, it doesn't cost here, we should get this one done and then pursue the other.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to.
All right. Well, very good, and we do have a resolution here to approve. We have to do a local law in order to get a stop intersection, and so it's subject to a public hearing, and so we have resolution number four, establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the adoption by the town board of the town of Red Hook, a local law A proposed for 2017 regarding a new stop at Rokeby Road, we'll call it Extension, east of Route 103.
It's not actually labeled Extension anymore.
It isn't, okay.
That was removed.
That's why it says Rokeby Road.
Much too.
Maybe took that away. All right, so ISO MOE, is there a second?
What's the date?
And I will establish it for the date of.
Twenty-fifth.
January twenty-fifth, is that could give us enough time? I think we need ten days on this one. Is that right? Ten days on this one. Would that give us enough time to publish?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So January twenty-fifth, and at seven thirty-five p.m., does that work for us? All right, so that's my motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
ISO MOE. Okay, so my apologies, back to incentive zoning. And so we were in the process of taking a look at, since we are updating that section of the code, any way to provide for developers to phase in their incentive zoning fees when they phase in their developments. We were going to look at other provisions in that section of the law. I think I had pointed out some of the challenges. I'm trying to have one of the community benefits option, which is a developer goes in and pays to preserve other land in the ADD, and some of the challenges include that we cannot leverage those funds that are used for that purpose, like we do when we receive either community preservation funds or incentive zoning funds. Also highlighted in looking over the code, the difficulty in administering something like that, and making sure we had our definitions correct. As you know, this law had to be updated soon after it was adopted in two thousand and eleven, because it didn't initially exclude lands that were already under easement. So Michelle did respond, or planner, responded to at least one aspect of the question, why was it in there? That's in her December memo. Asked her to also try to address perhaps if, if we were to consider removing that as a community benefit, what would the challenges be? What would the impact be? And so she's given us some correspondence to consider. And I think at this point, it'd be nice to have some direction, at least, to tell her what to do, so that we can move this along sometime in February. And I wondered if you had some thoughts, or if you needed to consider it some more.
Didn't we discuss this in December? I have some pretty strong feeling that this should be limited to changing the, altering the incentive zoning formula as it would apply to the Kirchhoff Project, happens to be the first one to go forward, but I would be unwilling to, to move, to, to make any changes in, in, in the larger, the larger aspects of the law as they reply, reply, uh, applied to the Centers in Green Space and the Ag Business District. I would just want to limit it to, to what, what this was, what we addressed, actually a year ago. It's been, it's been, it's been, it's been a year since we initially said we'd do this.
Right, I don't think that's, that's the issue necessarily, Harry, but if you, what you're saying is you don't want to address those other aspects.
No, I don't.
Okay.
That's my, my position, anyway. That, that we should limit it to the, to the incentive zoning for the Kirchhoff, what is now known as the Kirchhoff Project, but it would of course apply to any other project that is similarly designed.
Okay, and you're comfortable with being able to administer all the public benefits of having a developer protect portions of different parcels and not being able to leverage those funds?
Yeah, we, that, that was, that was a great deal of discussion four years ago, no, five years ago, and, and that was, that was what we finally came up with. I don't know what would come out of the woodwork if we started, started that all over again, but it, it seemed to be, because in five years, it has, nothing has happened, so, and it, it's, it's worked, that would say to me, it's worked so far, and we have this issue that's outstanding, that I think we need to move, that I feel we need to move forward with ASAP.
Okay, but in fairness, it hasn't been implemented. When you say it's worked so far, nobody's actually taken advantage of that.
Correct. Well.
Did you have some thoughts about, I think she had some comments about if you were to keep it, maybe some clarification on the definition of buildable acreage, and then she had some comments which maybe would not be relevant for your viewpoint on if you were to scrap that option.
I'm not sure exactly what you're asking me, but.
Oh, well, her, her recommendation.
But I read, I read the whole thing.
Yeah.
I've looked at it considerably, and it was part of the discussion five years ago, so I'm.
In particular, Harry, I'm referencing her December memo that says, perhaps there's worthy of clarification of the definition of buildable acreage, so that it's consistent with one forty-three twenty-three.
From the discussions I've had, that, that boils down to a nip in my mind, and I'm not sure if we should open the, open that issue again for something that's as minor as that.
Well, we haven't actually made this law in terms of having a public hearing yet, so if it really is just a nip, it could be included in the law that's going to do for the public hearing, right?
We had a public hearing. We, we, it's just the, yeah, we did, it's just ready for our town board approval. We had a public hearing on the, on the change of that.
We didn't, we discussed it in public, but I don't think we ever went to a public hearing.
I'd have to look at the minutes, because we discussed something that was ready to be voted on by the town board, and then the, you know, the idea of something, of changing it all once.
Well, this started a year ago.
Or agreement was a long time ago, but then we, we brought it to public hearing last fall.
And it's been, it's been, it's been, it's been left on the vine for a long time, and I feel as though we're, we've been.
On the phase in, yeah, of the papers.
Yeah. We did go, we did go to a, we did go to a public hearing.
We did go to a public hearing.
We did.
It was just, it was ready for us to vote on.
Wasn't there some follow-up from that?
When was the public hearing?
It was last October.
Yeah, we did the public hearing.
Can they, tile, submit a further request after that?
No, in, in reading the whole thing, Robert had a couple of concerns about other provisions in our present plan, and felt it might be more practical economic if we wanted to address them, to address it all at once. But the problem is, one, I agree with Harry, I don't think it makes much difference there, but, but two, you know, we had come to agreement with these people a long time, and we had the public hearing on, on the provision that we all agreed to, so I'm all in favor of us moving forward with it.
Right, and in September, you closed the public hearing.
I said, I told you, September.
Sorry, I was thinking about, right, no, in September, you closed. No, in September, you closed the public hearing. And then you had a conversation about the phase and other issues. Right, okay. And now it's going to get to talk to Michelle about it. Right.
This, this draft is all cut and spliced and, you know, I mean, that, that was the final document that came out of the public hearing? Question marks and remove and all that sort of stuff?
Sorry, what are you looking at?
I'm looking at the draft of the.
I don't think it was here at the public hearing. It was right at the draft.
To amend the local law entitled local space incentive zoning.
Well, I think that Robert articulated a markup one, that some provisions that said remove.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Something that Robert articulated absolutely. Thanks.
Don't we have to have a document that comes out of that public hearing?
No, I think it was, it was, this document was submitted as during the course of the public hearing.
Right, but what you told the public hearing on.
Is the clean copy.
Was the, was the clean copy, exactly right.
Right.
We had the clean copy. And after the public hearing, Robert, you, you asked us if we could put off the voting because you had a couple of questions, you know, with the incentive zoning thing, not about what we had just had the public hearing on, but other sections.
Well, but you have a public hearing on the entire section of the law. And so, for example, again, not to, not to beat a dead horse, but I think a few years ago I noticed that we weren't even deducting lands under easement for, for calculations. And so these are just things that, you know, when you take a fresh look at the law, you see problems, very obvious problems, I think frankly. I mean, we don't even require an entire parcel to have an easement on it. We don't even really have any requirements for the easements themselves. We don't even have a model easement as, as Michelle references. So when we say that some, some developer can put an easement on a property, we don't even really define that in a way that legally.
I'm a little baffled. When we came up with that original law, Michelle worked on it for months and years before we even came up with it.
Right, yeah.
And, you know, and then, then we worked, you know, with this particular group that asked us to, to look at how they have to, to pay for the incentive zoning.
Right.
And we went around for two or three years on that and then came up with that plan that we all finally agreed to after a long time.
Right.
And then had a, had a public hearing on that.
Right.
And now, you know, we've had Green Plan relook at our original thing and then they have questions of things that they, they spent ad infinitum drawing up in the first place.
Well, if we're going to ask developers or allow them to have an option to place an easement on a property, there are so many variations of easements. I mean, there are very restrictive ones. I've seen easements that are very lax.
I understand all that. If we want to have, if we want to spend the money for our planner to continue to second guess their own work, fine, but that should not hold us up from moving forward with the part that we finally come to agreement on and had the public hearing on.
Well, I'm, I'm not in favor of, of holding anything up. I've been sort of pushing to get some feedback on whether or not while we're updating that we should remove this section of it. I've been sort of pushing for some feedback from, from you all on this. I think it's fraught with problems that are going to come back to bite us, but that's my, that's my opinion. And I think even from some of the correspondents, I think there's a, a sense of maybe it needs a, you know, a little bit more clarification. And certainly we should have a model easement.
I mean, couldn't we make a list of what you say are the problems with the Centers in Green Space, the way it was crafted and quickly adopted? And then have a meeting with Green Plan and go over those specific issues that you raised, including the, the model plan for easements?
Yeah, I think we.
And address it in that way.
We really need to move forward with the Rookahoe, the, the issue with, with the Kirchhoff development and get that, get that finished. And, you know, I'm, I'm reluctant to open the kimona again with, with zoning that we put years' effort into.
Yeah, but Harry, we still always should take a look at whatever's done.
Well, okay.
In the event that something was done.
I don't want to hold this other thing up until we do that.
Get Green Plan to bring to our attention what maybe we could tweak on the, on the original law.
But they, they're second guessing themselves because they spent ad infinitum the time going over, just drawing it up in the first place, Bill.
I know.
Well, this was, this was an option again. I, sorry, go ahead.
She sent a letter today that, that says there's real, she doesn't see any real issues, real issues with it as, as I've, as, you know, as I read it. And then I've had a number of conversations about it and I don't, nobody has, has given me any, any strong reason to, to do, to do anything here yet again with something that we accomplished and, and finished five years ago. And, but I'm mostly concerned with, I'm mostly concerned with getting this, getting this done.
Green Plan wants to refer to you, the issue about the model easement. Yeah, I think so, sure.
Chris, do you have, do you have the, I, I don't think I was here for that. That was probably right after I got out of the hospital. I don't think I was here for that meeting.
Do I have which?
Do you have the actual law that was discussed at, or in that open, in, in the public hearing?
You have it in your packet.
The record I have is that we.
You have it.
I have it here?
Yes, you have it in your packet and ignore the markup. The markup was to get a response.
Is this it?
Yeah.
It's just one pair of.
So if you ignore it.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, in any event, I mean, what you're going to procedurally, if you're ready to succeed then, what we need to do is review the part two and, and have a neg deck in front of us so that we can adopt the neg deck and then adopt the local law. Those are the proceedings that we need to conclude. So if you're ready to do that, then I would have Michelle prepare the neg deck part and the part two part, and I would prepare the resolution for the next meeting if that would be appropriate.
Did you slip in the zones, zoning too?
Well, wait, well, that's, that's different.
Don't you want to save money by doing it?
No, 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 we'll, we will, we'll take care of that. But we haven't heard yet from all the board members and I just want to make sure that that's where we're headed.
Oh, he's doing it.
All right, so I think we've heard from Harry and from Jim. Sarah, did you want to try?
Well, I think as I shared before, my view is that if we, I also forgot that we had done a public hearing already. So if we hadn't done one, I would have been willing to pursue the small nits, as Harry calls them, that Michelle had talked about, those two very small clarifications. But since we've already done a public hearing, I feel we should just move ahead with what we've already agreed on. And I agree with members down the way that at this point, unpacking the possible issues with the other parts of the law, I think is a longer term, something we should continue to look at always. But that right now, I haven't seen anything in Michelle's memos that convinces me that we would be making a grave error by not changing those right now. So I feel we should go ahead and move forward with the, I think we already did great work on streamlining the, the cash fee, you know, payment for incentive zoning. That part I think is a real step in the right direction and we can keep looking at the other part, but I'd be comfortable going ahead and approving the law as we changed it for the public hearing.
No, no. What, what, there's notes on this. Do the note.
Harry, I told you, ignore, ignore the markups.
Ignore the markup.
Ignore the markups. That's the clean law and we ask.
That's what was discussed at this, at this public hearing?
Yes.
Ignore the markups, yeah. Okay.
And I will note that you circulated that, you know, you did, you did review your part one to your lead agency. You circulated to the county board for the OWRP. They confirmed their consistency finding. You circulated to the county and they came back with matter of law concern. So you did go through that process, which picked in that draft law that we called the public hearing on.
That's correct. And as a matter of fact, not the nitpick, but after the close, closure of the public hearing, how long do we have to, to vote yea or nay?
Did the decisions change?
I love the rig attorneys come out with reasonable time.
Nobody's going to complain. It doesn't sound like it. They want it, anyway.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion that we go ahead and ask Michelle to prepare the remaining secret documents related to this?
I'd make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Got a second by Jim. And any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I am going to vote nay on this. I do think that we, it's not a service to the residents to not have those funds be leveraged as we do with other funds. It's significantly different and I don't believe that this option can be legally administered. Okay, moving on. Items number six, and then we have B. So we are in the several things that we are considering with updates for our zoning. We took a look at, in Annandale, we looked at the northern section of Annandale. We had already discussed the line change for the institutional district. And it was brought to my attention that we should also take a look at the southern neck of the woods where Bard owns, once again, almost the entire area there surrounding the triangle that we referenced earlier. So I have a packet prepared. This is the hamlet district. And as you know, we now have the historic landmarks overlay, so we have control over the architecture. And again, in the spirit of trying to allow for expansion for the college, which is a major employer, in appropriate places as opposed to inappropriate locations, wanted to get your feedback while we are considering expanding the institutional campus area to include the properties that you already own. Here are the properties on the south. And as you can see by the list, they own all that I believe, three or four of them And if we want them to utilize these structures. In lieu of, you know, perhaps constructing new ones on, say Montgomery Place in the institutional district there.
I have some thoughts on this, having thought about it for a while now, since we had this question a couple of weeks ago, is that I'm concerned about unintended consequences such as losing historic buildings that are there. And should we, should, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what Bard's intent is or what they want to do with this, but there are several historic buildings there. And it, it is a, a historic community as it stands now. But, I mean, what do they intend to do with it? And how many, how many of these buildings are owned by, by landowners other than Bard?
Well, you have the list there, Harry. I believe it's four out of these parcels that are not owned. And one, I believe, works at Bard out of the four. The other one, I believe, is Ruth OJ's place. And I will remind you again, Bard, I'm not sure how this all came to be. It was decades ago, but Bard owns the sewer plant that those houses utilize.
Well, Bard put it in.
Right.
But, you know, Robert, to go on with the Harris side, I have no problem with making the, the northern area that we spoke about a month ago, three months ago, as part of, of the Bard owned property as, as part of the institutional zone there. And that's surrounded by the institution. But I would have a real problem with this. You know, we have all these guidelines. In fact, we just reinforced them more for appropriateness and all of that in our hamlet zones.
Well, actually, we did it, we did it for this district. See, it no longer applies just to hamlet. It implies to this entire district now.
But to, to say that this is going to be an institutional district now and not, and not a hamlet zone, it, it, it just doesn't seem to sit properly with me. I mean, we're talking about the entire hamlet. If, if these lines on these properties shown here are accurate with what they're talking about.
There's no more hamlet of Annandale.
Exactly.
Well, it doesn't, it doesn't function as a hamlet now, anyway, unfortunately.
Now it doesn't.
No, it doesn't.
Well, how's it function, how does a hamlet function though? You know, you take our hamlet of Berrytown, our hamlet of Upper Red Hook and our hamlet of Vander. How does that ham, how do they function? We, I, I don't know. I'm asking.
Well, there's, there's unfortunately no walkability left in this. And this is going to turn into, I mean, it already is owned and operated by Bard mostly. And again, to your point, Jim, we have those architectural controls now on this entire area, including the institutional district that they are currently operating under. So we, we're not shrinking our architectural controls. We expanded it greatly, if anything.
What was, what was the, who took the initiative to, to, to make this change? I mean, where, where did this thought come from? Is this, is this, is this something Bard wanted to, wanted us to do or?
Well, no, actually, it was not Bard who approached me on this. It was somebody who was doing, doing work and said that they understood the, that we were considering the northern section, it made sense, and wondered why we didn't consider the southern section. And that's when we started looking into the properties and of course realizing that they own not only the sewer underneath these parcels, but also most of the parcels already. And again, you know, thinking in terms of appropriate places for expansion of institutional uses, you know, they'll use, I think they're already using publications as in the old ADOs or something. Is that right? I mean, there's some.
I don't know what's, I don't know what's there. I really don't.
Yeah.
Now, what about these three, three houses that are on Montgomery Place? That Montgomery Place has restored the exterior of them? They're not in, they're not in the boundaries that.
That's right.
That's, that's, would they be included or not included?
Well, that's something to, to discuss. That's not in what's mapped there, but yeah, those two buildings, again, I mean, I think we have to think in terms of like, what would we as a community want those buildings to be used for? They're right now in the ABD. And so they're shells of buildings. They look beautiful on the outside. The state funds were used to restore them. The question then becomes what would we reasonably anticipate Bard using them for? They have ABD zoning right now and whether or not you would want to see that also included in the institutional zone so they could use them for offices or what have you.
Apparently they have, from what I've been told, they have water, water and septic systems and on those, aren't there three buildings there as I remember? It looks like. I only see two here.
There's North Swiss.
It's all right.
There's another little shack, I think, at the beginning of it. It's very hard to see. I can load up for you if you like.
No, it's all right. You see them twice a day or many times. Anyway, I think something we should.
You want to mull it over?
Mull it over. Needs to be mull over.
Did we get something from Bard College asking it would just be done?
Okay. You would like some info again from Bard College?
Well, I wouldn't want to be in a position where we do it and then Bard says, why, why did you do that?
No, 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 of course not.
Because you're talking about town gown, you're talking about institutional and residential. It's a little.
It's certainly, I would certainly want to have conversations with the, the residents who are, who are, people who own houses, their properties there, who are not Bard.
Right, absolutely. That would be the four, the four families, I believe, we've identified them, yeah?
Well, George and Kathleen Evans are the only ones that are specifically.
And I think we have the OJ, Ruth OJs there. And then Robert Kelly, who works at Bard, who's our poet laureate for Duchess County, he's one of the parcels. And I think that's pretty much, oh, and Bruce Chilton owns the small blue house there on the turn.
Weren't there a few from the top part two that?
Well, that, well, that we already did.
But we didn't, I don't think the board heard from the residents. That's what I hear people saying. I think you reached out to them, but I don't think the board has ever seen feedback from residents on this issue.
And I'd be happy to ask them to send an email.
Yeah, I think, I, I mean, I, one thing I. Yeah, I think, I, I mean, I, one thing I hear Bill and Harry saying is that it's great that we're looking at this and considering it, but it would be good to have more feedback from the residents that are affected and also the major institution in writing or in person to a board meeting or in some way in the public record so that we could really consider the whole issue in light of their feedback, besides just looking at it, you know, from our limited perspectives on paper.
Okay.
I'd also like to see, I don't know if anybody else is interested, the, and we can all look this up on our own, but the, the table just showing sort of what the uses are, you know, compared from a hamlet district to an institutional, just to get a sense for what residents are going to be in for.
There's a number of them considerably different.
Right, I mean, there's a few differences, I mean, and maybe there's.
I can't see scrapping our whole idea of hamlets.
I mean, there's probably pros and cons, and maybe nobody will feel strongly about it, but I think it's worth looking at that also, just so we go in with our eyes open.
And I'd also want to, want to hear from Bard about it because, I mean, they're certainly, certainly a significant player in, in making it a, a institutional district.
Okay. All right, good. We'll get you more input from the individuals that would be most immediately affected. All right, the third item for discussion is solar zoning. And as you know, Bill has reported, the task force has taken a look at and has passed on to the supervisor's office some zoning to regulate solar. We right now allow small installations with the unified solar permit, but there are individuals and corporations interested in doing larger scale solar. And we need to have regulations in place that we are comfortable with. We did receive, related to that, we received word, notice of intention from a solar developer. And it raised the question, under New York state law, there is an exemption for an increase in property tax assessment when you install solar on your property. That's to encourage it to happen. And when it comes to these large solar farms, however, there is an option short of exempting the community out from the real property tax increase associated with the installation. We can ask for a pilot, a payment in lieu of taxes from the developer. So we received this notice, which is, we believe, a bit premature because we don't yet have zoning in place that would allow this scale. But we do have sort of a timeline to respond to the developer, in essence.
Yeah, what's that timeline? I mean, who sets that?
Statute.
Statute, yeah.
We've got to look at it, you know, um, we have a historic town.
What is the timeline, for example?
And one of the main things we talk about all the time is our historic town and view shed and so on.
Right.
And, you know.
It's a gateway, too.
You know, and that's a gateway. We talk about view sheds.
Grant or not grant the pilot?
You know, and solar panels on roofs and things are one thing. But, you know, you get a field of solar panels, there's nothing uglier than, than a bunch of ground mounted solar panels.
Well, that's.
Particularly in our view shed or our gateway. This is something we really should look at.
That would be addressed in the zoning language, and you would want to be sure that adequate protections were in there. What, where we are for tonight's discussion, however, is just simply that we need to notify within 60 days, when we've been sent notice, that we intend to require a pilot should this project move forward. And again, we're not saying that the project has been greenlighted. We're going to point out to the developer that there isn't zoning in place that would yet allow this. But if it does come, well.
It's too early for us to make a decision.
Well, I think it's in your best interest if you might acquire a pilot if a project like this is permissible, that you put them on notice that you would require a pilot. Aren't you the way to the opportunity to do that?
That's fine, but when you say if it's permissible, are you saying, does the state have laws that could override our zoning?
None.
And our historic nature and view shed?
No, we're saying as we.
I wouldn't give any developer the ability to say the town agreed to a pilot.
Okay, can I just explain a lot to the folks? Okay, so 487, you may be familiar with it, but it says that towns can opt out of the exemption. But if you haven't opted out at the exemption, then the property is automatically exempt by a plan to the assessor if they qualify under the, you know, setting aside the issue of zoning, which I think is a different issue. There's lots of ways to deal with the zoning issue right on the project. But just from the tax exemption perspective, it would be an as of right tax exemption if you haven't opted out, which I believe we haven't. But there is a provision that says that the, in the statute, that, that a proposed developer of this type of project can put you on notice that they intend to construct such a facility, and you have 60 days to tell them, I intend to require a pilot. And that's your one-time opportunity to open that pilot window and have that conversation. So my recommendation to you is to do that for the time being because you haven't made a decision that you're going to opt out of the, you know, you haven't, you don't have a local law to opt out of.
What's involved to, to pursue the opting out of the exemption provision?
A local law. You'd have to do a local law to do that. So in the meantime.
But you, you want to be careful of that because you cannot opt out of the exemption for certain sizes. So if you opt out, somebody who puts panels on their house will get an increase in their assessment.
At the state level, that if you're going to opt out, you'd have to opt out for the whole law.
Right.
So the pilot would appear to allow you to make some more nuanced decisions. Still, you'd have to have a rational basis for making those distinctions, but there could be.
Do you have something that's the guidelines on the opting out provision? What we can opt out on as far as size or something like that, correct?
Nothing related to size.
The only, I have some guidance from, let's see if we have it.
Can we use language that we would, we would consider a pilot for any project, but, but not be specific to this particular development?
Why, why isn't this assessed at the, why, wouldn't it just be reassessed at the value, the value of, of the, of the photo?
It's an exemption, a statutory exemption for the additional value that is, that's put in place for 15 years for the additional value added by the solar facility.
This is done by New York State many years ago to encourage people to control around their.
Encourage people to put them on their roofs, not to have solar farms.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But they allow, they allow.
All right, okay.
They allow a provision.
You've answered my question.
For us to ask for.
Yeah.
Payment in lieu of taxes for something like this. And so we have 60 days to respond. There's a draft response which basically says, we think you're premature. If this should go forward, if we should have zoning that would allow this, we would, however, request pilot.
We could certainly set up a pilot draft here.
The draft is in your folder.
There's another issue I have with this is that, that I understand that, that they have, they have, part of this, this property goes into Reinbeck, and, and they're considering putting in photovoltaics into Reinbeck, which would really have an impact on our.
Again, so the zoning issues, I think, are separate issues.
This almost sounds like it's in record, but Reinbeck mailing out this.
Yeah, that they also, they also proposed Reinbeck.
So what you're saying, Chris, is that the town should be smart to, to say, yes, we may want a pilot just in case all of this goes into play, or otherwise we end up with nothing. But I would hope that the language in the proposed resolution would be a little bit vague so they, we can't be quoted as condoning some project before it even comes to our town.
So the resolution actually doesn't speak to this particular project. I've got two things for you to look at. One is a resolution that would indicate, this is for your consideration, that the owner of a property which includes solar and renewable systems eligible for exemption under authority seven. And I've given exemption which you can think about. Other than a facility installed on a site inside to provide energy to serve the residential or agricultural structures on that site, say, a small, similar use facility, shall be required to enter into a contract for payment in lieu of taxes per section 47 on terms and conditions approved by resolution of the board. So in other words, it's generically to say, if you're a project other than, you know, a single, you know, service site, panels on your own roof, then you're going to be required to enter into a pilot agreement on terms and conditions approved by the town board. So that, I think, then puts you in a position to be able to give the notice to any applicant, you know, this one or any applicant. We also have a proposed notice for this particular applicant, which says that the town believes that your notice is premature. The absence of an application for the voting department and a corresponding determination that poses a limited, closed location, without them in the foregoit and without waiving any of its rising to section 47, the town board advises you that any abandoned solar farm is, could be developed in the town, the town will require a contract for payment in lieu of taxes and so forth. So we have.
Do we have copies of that, Chris?
It's all in your folder there. I think that's the resolution.
It doesn't look like a resolution, that's why.
I see the resolution, yes.
And a letter here?
Is it in this?
All right, okay, yep.
You got it? Okay, all right.
So one is a resolution which is generic, and the other one is specific to this particular application.
So if you would look those over and, so we can have some kind of a, an official response from the board at our next meeting, so we can meet that 60-day deadline and look at the language and see if you're comfortable with the language on both the letter and the resolution. And then we can put the resolution up for consideration sometime in the springtime as well.
Why do we wait for the resolution to, for the pilot?
What's that?
Why do we have to wait for the resolution to tell this?
No, we don't have to wait for the resolution. I'm saying we, we want to send a response within a 60-day period to work time. So if you could take a look at it, because I know some of you just saw that.
Yeah.
It looks like it's small, I mean, we have no choice, as Chris says. If we don't do it, we're going to lose.
Right.
Okay, so you're, you're comfortable with this draft, then?
Yep.
Okay.
Of this resolution, yeah.
And I would just ask.
Well, there's a resolution and there's a letter as well.
There's a letter, and what I would suggest is the resolution and then maybe authorize the supervisor to submit the letter specifically.
All three was required, yeah.
But, but just I want to again point out that, that I added the language to distinguish facilities installed on a single site and size to provide energy, to provide energy to serve that residential or agricultural structure on that site. Is that too narrow? Is that too?
A little facility installed on a site and size to provide.
Right, you may want to wordsmith that, Sarah especially. But what I'm trying to get at is obviously, you know, you may consider any commercial project, but certainly, you know, without trying to define what a solar farm is, you're not trying to require a pilot. It wouldn't be cost effective to try to go negotiate a pilot on a, a.
Yeah, that language fits a lot.
It seems very.
Everybody that does it for their home has, has done it because of NYSERDA, you know, the state incentive that we all pay for.
Right.
And NYSERDA only allows it, will not allow it to be any larger than 10% of the electricity that you presently use. And they require three years of prior billing to determine, oh, you don't qualify for that.
Well, it's a little different on certain properties. Agriculture, there's no limitation.
Who did this letter?
I did.
Did you do the travel letter?
Yeah.
But again, again, you may want to.
Well, why don't we?
Respect the agricultural structure, that's right.
Yeah, I think we need to make sure that it's, I think we need to make sure it's accurate.
It's premature, yes.
But if, if you're comfortable with it, why don't we take the two weeks and review the specifics and make sure there's no changes that we need to make?
I found it interesting that they send a letter to the assessor they intended this before they've even thought about pursuing a building from or anything like that. So it's quite obvious, yeah.
You could take the step of just authorizing the response in this particular case.
Oh, his brother owns the company, which is kind of delightful.
Well, that's what I propose.
Fields coming in the town, a giant solar.
Yeah, yeah.
We go forward with the letter and take a look at the resolution.
Yeah, they are, absolutely. Look at the ones back behind us, I hate them.
I think they're both good.
I do, too. I don't have any problem with it.
The letter and the resolution.
Well, okay.
Let's go ahead with the letter, but hold on to the resolution.
Those who are, like, I'm studying the solar issues.
You can run it by your people?
I think we need to take a look at the resolution, yeah. All right, so there's a motion to authorize the supervisor to send this draft of the letter. And who would like to make that motion?
Motion.
Who would like to second?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
All right.
I agree very much. Motion is approved.
I'm getting weak.
And we will bring back the resolution at our next meeting. Okay, and I apologize, we'll skip to number eight. Teresa, we kept you here. We wanted to make sure that we would have safe passage home, so that's why we kept you. So you could be sure to have the roads available when we left.
That's going to be 50 tomorrow. Mother Nature will do it tomorrow for us, eh?
Okay, so each year, the town board approves an agreement for the expenditure of highway money. Let's see if we have that here for the folks at home.
We'd like any signatures, Teresa.
And what it is, is an agreement to expand budgeted amounts for the upcoming year to conduct two activities. Repair of roads and then repaving of roads. Let's see if we have that. We do have it. So here we go, for the folks at home. And it's a very basic form of, essentially, item one is general repair. So we budgeted $50,000 set aside for repairs upon the 60 miles of what we have of town highways. And then permanent improvements is the repaving, and that's $225,000. A good deal of that is CHIPS money. But we did increase the local contribution by 30% in 2017, and we will need to continue to increase that amount going forward if we're going to try to have a reasonable repaving schedule. So this agreement is very basic. And it authorizes the.
Where, where does this, where does this agreement come from? I've never seen this before. I mean, we have a budget and, and.
Harry, every year.
Every year we do this, Mary.
We're required to do this so that I can spend the money, because it's in the budget. It's between us and the county.
This is for the purpose of the county, then?
Well, what, what we have done over the past three years is to equip it generic.
May I circulate yours as well?
When we decide which particular projects don't be amended. So we have had them every year and sometimes two, three times a year, based on what our projects are going to be.
Yeah, so I'll, if there's no further discussion, if there's no problems, I'll circulate. We need two copies to share with our highway superintendent.
Do you have two there, Robert?
We do have two, and they're making a round. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve this agreement.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
All right.
All right, so, well, thank you very much, Teresa. I know you won't leave us before the conclusion of the meeting.
Is that good discussion?
We do have potentially attorney client. That deal will be gone, you can't see us, okay. We just have one other item, and again, it's just something for you to consider. The county is updating for the federal government our hazard mitigation plan. And this was worked on, I think, prior to my time, and reviewing it. Obviously, needs to have some updates to it, some corrections to it. So if you'd be kind enough to take a look at it. I've notified Bill Beal down in emergency management that we would be in a position sometime either later this month or in February. He said that would be fine. Any things that are left out of this document? And it's been forwarded to our engineer, to the new chair of our disaster preparedness committee for their input as well. So if you'd be kind enough to just take a look at it. All right, correspondence, very quickly. We have a nice letter from some homeowners on River Road. They experienced a fire on Christmas Day. And Steve had to go out there. They experienced a fire on Christmas Day and Steve had to go out there and take a look at the property as he does in the case of wildfires. And so it's a very nice letter expressing their gratitude for this responsiveness. We have, as I referenced earlier, a memo from Judge Treibwasser regarding a grant. They obtained $9,585, $9,585 for chairs, for a shredder, as part of that screen cost. And we congratulate him and thank him for doing that as well. We have correspondence from Audubon International that would like to know if we are interested in becoming a member of their Sustainable Communities program. And I think I circulated to you, there's a lot of information there to review. If you would let us know if you have interest. We did receive word from the Department of State. Unfortunately, we did not get a grant towards the shared recreational facility. We are still waiting to hear, however, from the county on CDDG funds, whether or not we will get that grant. And that's all the correspondence I have. Does anybody else have any correspondence?
Yeah, I don't know. Just for the stock.
Okay, public comment? I don't believe we have any public comment at the end of the evening. At this point in time, at 9:25, I would like to make a motion that we go into attorney-client session. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Thank you all very much. Happy New Year.